All right, here we go. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday, October 19, 2021, meeting of the Edina City Council. We are, as many of you know, operating in a hybrid mode. So those folks that are here with us, bear with me a moment while I talk to folks who may be watching on cable TV at edinamn.gov or maybe watching on Facebook. Some of those methods are available to everybody that wants to participate but not able to come to City Hall. So tonight, you've got two opportunities to talk to the council, whether you're in chambers or in the virtual world. We have community comment, and then we have one public hearing matter this evening as well. And with respect to both community comment and the public hearing matter, you can talk to the council about things that are not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. Of course, at the public hearing matter, you'll be addressing that particular matter if you so desire. But just recall that with community comment, you can't talk to the council about anything that's on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. So that reminder is this is going to come up fairly quickly in the agenda, a reminder to call 800-374-0221 if you want to get into queue, especially early on for community comment, 800-374-0221. And the conference ID is 3297692. I'll repeat that, 3297692. Give the operator your name, your street address, and your telephone number, and then press star 1 on your telephone keypad when you'd like to get into the queue to speak to the council, and then one of our staff members will bring you in to speak to the council if you're connecting with us virtually. So I will now call the meeting to order and request our clerk Sharon Allison for a roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. The next matter before us this evening is the pledge. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. Next, we have had published for the public and for the council a agenda, form of meeting agenda. Is there anyone on the council or from a staff standpoint who wishes to modify the meeting agenda? Hearing nothing. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published as shown?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Staunton to approve the meeting agenda as shown. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. And now we are at community comment. So I hope folks have been calling in if they desire to speak to the council. Again, a reminder that phone number is 800-374-0221. It's on the screen right now. There's your conference ID, 3297692. Feel free to call in and get in the queue, and we'll bring you in to talk to the council. A reminder again, nothing on the agenda tonight can be addressed in community comment or if it's scheduled for a future public hearing. First, we're going to see if there are folks in from our community that are here live that wish to talk to the council about a matter of concern to them. So let's go first to folks in the audience. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Nora Davis, and I live at 6921 Southdale Road in the Lake Cornelia neighborhood. And I'm here-
Ms. Davis, would you hold for a moment? We're getting a real echo up on the dais. I wonder if we can eliminate that problem so we can hear you better and-
Okay. Am I too close?
No, it's not you. I think it's our equipment.
It's the voice of God, Nora. You've got it.
Is it better now?
No.
No.
But maybe we'll-
Well, it was a beautiful day today, and I hope everyone got outside today. I understand it's going to rain. We need the rain, but then I've heard, well, maybe we might get some frost, so maybe our beautiful October is over with.
If we don't get this fixed, we'll just have to, we'll listen to you in stereo.
Yes.
We'll try this one.
Okay. Okay, is that better?
It is.
Okay. Now, I'm here to speak for the trees tonight. I'm very concerned about the number of mature trees that are being removed throughout the city. I saw mature trees removed at the 4404 Valley View site, and the building plopped down next to the sidewalk. Those trees can't be replaced, and with reduced setbacks, newly planted trees aren't going to have a chance, and I know it's happening all over the city. We all know the value of mature trees, air and water quality, health benefits, ground, and floodwater control. I was very pleased to hear over 600 trees have been planted, but without knowing how many were removed, it's a moot point, and not all those newly planted trees are going to survive. Replacing a mature tree with a sapling is akin to firing your professional staff and replacing that professional staff with second graders. Eventually, those kids will grow into the job, but it's going to take 15 to 25 years to have that happen. And now with the Climate Action Plan in the offing, we seem to be shooting ourselves in the foot. Saplings cannot provide the benefits of mature trees. Redevelopment has also been very hard on trees. Not all the trees in the developer plans have survived. Check out the Aurora around along France Avenue, and you'll see trees in distress. A couple of them have died and have been replaced, but the remaining ones are kind of sad-looking. The parking lot at Shake Shack is an example of trees planted in a parking lot. They are not doing well. And the ones on France, several of those trees have died. I do have to give Target credit. I don't know if you've been in their parking lot lately, but there are a lot of trees that are not doing well, but they do replace them. Unfortunately, trees aren't annuals, they're perennials. They should survive without being replaced on a regular basis. We need a really strong tree plan, one that focuses on saving, protecting, and planting trees. As part of that plan, we need a Truth in Trees section where building plans would be carefully vetted, adding full-grown lush trees where the survival chances are low to impossible. Well, as one developer told me, it's all about the marketing. So please, let's do a strong tree plan as part of that Climate Action Plan. We have deadlines to meet, and we can't afford to wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Anyone else in the audience wish to come forward and speak to the council? All right. Dan, do you have anybody in the queue?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have anyone in queue, and we do not have anyone on the call right now, so-
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to move on to the city manager's response to community comments. We have the city manager address community comments that were made at the prior meeting, and I believe, as I recall, there may have been one or two that you need to address. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, there were, there were two comment, community comments from our October 4th meeting. The first one was Steve Anderson. He expressed some concerns about the Tangden family lawsuit that the city is involved in regarding climate change, water, and how we are, what we are going to do with that, particularly how that, if at all, impacts how the city might handle water issues in the Morningside neighborhood. So I think we can easily separate those two concepts. They're quite different in terms of responding to the first part of his question. I think we've done that in a couple of different forums. And regarding the second part of his question, the Morningside piece, we'll hear a little bit more tonight from City Engineer Milner when he talks. The second comment was from Carmen Roseland, and she expressed some concerns about neighboring property to her. We have had a chance to speak with her directly and share kind of a point-by-point response to her concerns, and we're going to, we're going to continue to do work on those concerns throughout this week and next week.
All right, good, thank you. That prompted anything from council members, any inquiries anybody wants to make? All right, thanks, Manager Neil. We're going to move on now to the consent agenda. There's several items on the consent agenda. Councilmember Anderson would like to remove 6-Q. Is there anyone else on the council that wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda for a more detailed discussion? All right. With the exception of 6-Q, is there a motion to adopt the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce to adopt the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of 6-Q. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. And now we're at 6-Q, which is a proposed site improvement plan agreement and a final rezoning from PCD III to PUD at 4040 Seventieth Street West, and turn now to Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this week, we had inquiries on the site improvement plan agreement at 4040 West Seventieth. There were three questions within that communication that, actually, Ms. Davis, who testified just a few moments ago, inquired about, and I wonder if Mr. Teague has any response to those.
Yes, certainly, Mayor and Councilmember Anderson. So the first question was in regards to the construction hours of operation. It said that construct, there was a, there was a typo in there or an error. It was the old code that was changed last year, limiting the hours of construction. The agreement said 9:00 AM, or I believe it was 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and that should read 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. That change has been made within your packet, and it's uploaded, so it's, it's in front of you this evening with that catch, so that was a good catch. The second question was in regard to third-party contractors that are working out on the site. The bottom line of this agreement is that, the agreement is between the city and the developer. The developer may hire subcontractors to do some of the work. If they cause problems or cause some damage, it's the developer that's responsible, so the agreement is between those two specific parties. And the third question was in regard to insurance. The developer is required to have $1 million worth of insurance. It's my understanding that state statute allows, or there's a maximum that cities can require up to 1.5 million, something that, that maybe we want to consider in the future. The 1 million number has worked for the city in the past. We haven't had issues, but it might be something that we want to consider in the future. The other part of it is, should a adjacent property owner or someone feel that the construction work that's gone on in the site, that they've caused damaged, damage to their home or surrounding property, that would be an issue between adjacent property owner and the developer, so they would have to go directly to the developer. So those were the, those were the questions that were asked.
So that isolates that liability to the developers, the purpose of that?
Correct.
Thank you. Is, and I, we're not going to resolve any of this tonight, but I just wonder, at some future point, if you feel it advisable, or perhaps the city manager would respond to that, if you feel it advisable to consider moving that liability insurance level up, given the rising costs of almost everything, not to mention settlements, in the event of an issue? Is that something we might consider at some point?
Yes, it is. We would want to have a discussion with legal and risk advisors, but yeah, I think that's something we would consider.
Good, well, this was a, a good communication, gives us a rise to consider our liability in the future, as well as a good catch on, on construction hours, so thank you for that.
All right, thank you. Member Anderson, would you care to move that matter?
I would. I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-96 and Ordinance Number 2021-05.
Second.
All right, and that would include the final rezoning from PCD III to PUD at 4040 West Seventieth Street?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second motion by Member Anderson, second by Member Staunton to adopt the resolution as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. And I was just going to make one note here, as we usually do with donations, which are usually part of the consent agenda. We had a couple of generous donations in this last period that are being reported out now to the council. For those in the audience that don't know, if there's a donation to the city, it has to be approved on a four-fest vote of the council. And this week, we approved two donations to the Park and Rec Department. Kate's Fine Homes, some over $350 for a tree in Fox Meadow Park, and then Doris Grimes, I'm sure on behalf of a loved one, a bench at Arden Park, which was a $3,200 donation. So thank you to both those donors, and their names will appear on the, on the city website. So let's now move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is the special recognitions and recognitions and presentations. And we just have one item in that portion of the agenda this evening, and that's a proclamation involving what's called Extra Mile Day 2021. And I'll read that proclamation as follows. Whereas Edina, Minnesota is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Edina, Minnesota is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Edina, Minnesota is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Edina, Minnesota acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2021. Is there a motion to adopt Extra Mile Day proclamation designating November 1, 2021 as Extra Mile Day in the city of Edina?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce to adopt a proclamation as read, designating November 1, 2021 as Extra Mile Day in the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. And that completes the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. The next matter we have in front of us is a public hearing involving Resolution 2021-99, which was, which would potentially establish what we call the Eden-Wilson Tax Increment Financing District, which we know as the old Perkins site, and Manager Nundorf has this particular matter. Manager Nundorf.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Bill Nundorf, the city's Economic Development Manager. This evening, we're holding the public hearing to discuss and get additional input on the potential creation of a new tax increment financing district. This is called the Eden-Wilson District for Eden Avenue and Wilson, which are the prime intersections. I have a little bit of background to go through. Some of this will look familiar, so I'll go quick, I'll go through it quickly, but certainly I'm available for questions. Nick Anhut, one of our financial advisors from Ellers Associates, is also with us, happy to answer any questions that we can this evening. This topic is slated for the public hearing tonight and then final action in early November, so we're not requesting any action this evening, but just input. This proposed district is shown here in a old aerial photo. This is from the 1950s. This shows the area around City Hall and the Country Club before the interstate came through, when it was just a, an at-grade Normandale road, no bridges, no off-ramps or on-ramps, lots of trees, and very different development patterns, some entertainment, and then a giant cement factory by the railroad tracks. This image is, is from the late 1970s. After the highway came through, two bridges were built to span across the highway, roads were widened, on-ramps, off-ramps, a lot of changes in the transportation network. There's just a few buildings in this proposed district. The primary one, what's really driving this, this proposal, is the current Perkins Building. That was built in the early 1970s. Formerly, it had been home to a nursery and garden center. And then across the street from Perkins are the two historic buildings in Edina. These are owned by the city, the Grange Hall and the Cahill School. Both of those historic buildings were built in the late 1800s, relocated to this site, one in the 1930s, then when the highway came through, they got moved around a little bit, and the Cahill School joined at that location. The city has hired Stan Tech Companies, a local engineering architectural firm, to inspect and evaluate those existing buildings to confirm whether or not they comply with the state statutes on tax increment financing. They have reviewed both, inspected both of the buildings, and they, or all three of the buildings, and they did find that each of them is considered substandard in the eyes of the TIF statute and thus eligible for potential inclusion in a redevelopment district. The other contributing factor here in this proposal is that roadway network. 50th and 50th Street in particular is noted by high traffic volumes, especially in those morning and evening peak hours. The area has been identified by many folks as having a lack of sidewalks, incomplete sidewalks, and pretty much a dearth or a complete lack of bicycle facilities. Those are things that we'd like to change. The city's community plans, the comprehensive plan and other supporting documents there really call for a different type of environment in the future in this area, an environment that has vibrant neighborhood nodes that are better connected, whether you're driving, whether you're walking, or whether you're bicycling, and development that supports a mixture of uses to really create a more vibrant, engaged community. The proposal may look familiar. This was just approved through the zoning process in, earlier in the summer. This image is looking to the west, towards the highway, so this would be the new proposal for the Perkins property. The same building, from an aerial perspective, looking to the southeast with the Country Club Golf Course in the background. And then this image is the conceptual roadway design. The city's engineering department engaged a transportation consulting firm to really study the transportation networks here, and this is the conceptual layout of how the roads, sidewalks, and bike routes could be reconstructed to better connect the properties within the TIF district, but I think even more importantly, to connect them to the adjacent neighborhoods. Right now, there's a lot of disconnections, and that's something that we hope to change. As we've discussed earlier this summer, the developer of this project has requested that we use tax increment financing. They've requested 5.1 million in support over a 15-year term. Staff has hired Ellers and Associates to evaluate and scrutinize their, their budgets and their performance, and we can confirm that there is a budget gap. Without a resolution to that, we do not think this project will move forward in this shape. Earlier in August, we prepared a term sheet that listed the, the general business terms of a potential TIF agreement, and that was presented and discussed by the HRA. We're in the process of creating a full TIF contract that we expect to finish up in November and bring to this body at the, at this particular time, but the first step in this process is actually considering whether or not to create this district. This is our typical slide about tax increment. For those that are, that are not familiar, tax increment is one of the few economic tools allowed by Minnesota statute to be used by cities, and it really looks at the growth of the property tax base. So for example, the Perkins property is currently valued at about $3 million, according to the tax assessing records. When this project is finished, we're expecting it to be valued, not double, not triple, but about 11 times the current value, about $55 million. So it's that tremendous incremental growth that we're, that we'll capture here to help pay for the private, project and to help pay for the public improvements. When Edina uses tax increment, there's always a variety of different ways that a city could use it. We prefer the way that provides the least risk to the taxpayer, so that, that is typically embodied by a pay-as-you-go TIF note, and that's what we'd recommend here as we further these conversations with the developer. But basically, it requires the developer to build the project, finish it successfully, and start paying his higher taxes. Then the city would follow up and start making payments on that pledge. If the developer doesn't start, or they don't finish, they don't get a penny. The second piece of the, of the tax, tax increment financing are those roadway improvements. For those improvements, we'd suggest that, that a bond be used, so we let the, the private investment get started, make sure that it's going off on schedule and going to be completed on time. As that's nearing completion, we'd recommend that we pursue a bond to build the roads and the sidewalk improvements and the bike routes, et cetera, et cetera, after we're guaranteed that there's a funding source. That way, we minimize any risk to the taxpayer. I mentioned that Minnesota statute plays a big hand in the creation of a TIF district. There's three big steps when you use tax increment financing. First, we're creating the district. That's what we're here tonight to discuss. Secondly, the city council and the HRA will have separate discussions on how to use those monies. So tonight, we'll, we'll consider the, the creation of the TIF district. Prior to this evening, we've made visits to other groups. So we visited the Planning Commission a few weeks ago to get their input. We met with the HRA Board last week to get their input. For this particular district, we also met with other, other commissions to get their input really focused on, on those two historic buildings. It's unusual to, for, for the city to include city-owned buildings in a TIF district. It's, it's legal, it's permissible, we just haven't done it, I don't think ever, in Edina. We don't have that many historic buildings. So we met with the Heritage Preservation Commission, we met with the Park and Recreation Commission, and we met with the Edina Historical Society to get their initial input. And while there's no decisions, and certainly the need for a lot of conversation in the future, they were agreeable generally to include those buildings in the district in hopes of potentially relocating them at some point in the future, redeveloping that, that land for something else, and getting those facilities in a more usable and a better This map shows the rough boundaries of the TIF district right around City Hall, and from time to time, we're asked about, about how often Edina uses tax increment financing. Some folks say we use it on every single project, which is certainly not the case. We do use it sparingly. This chart shows how Edina and many other communities in the Twin Cities use tax increments, and in 2022, the next tax year, the little green bar on the right side, about 1% of Edina's tax base is expected to be in a TIF district. Currently, today, about 5% of Edina's tax base is in a TIF district. The game changer there is that the Southdale II district will expire at the end of this year, so all the new tax base that's been built up around Southdale will spill over back into the overall taxing, taxing mix. So as you can see in the chart, Edina uses TIF to a much lesser degree than most other cities, and we certainly do use it, use it sparingly. cities, and we certainly do use it sparingly. This map is a little bit more precise map of the TIF boundaries. We're proposing to use, to include two parcels and create a 25-year redevelopment district. And one of the essential ingredients in this TIF plan that's been distributed is an identification of the budget. So the state statute requires us to estimate the cumulative incremental taxes that are collected, and then to provide a forecast about how those dollars might be spent. So Ellers has estimated that over the 25 years' life, which is actually 26 years of collection, will create about $22 million in new taxes. Now, that doesn't include the regular taxes that get paid to the county, the city, and the school, but that's just the new tax from this finished project. We've also prepared the chart on the right, which shows how those dollars could be spent. It's a budget, subject to change, but the state statute identifies the line items that you see here. So certainly, tax increment could be used in pursuit of acquisition, site improvements, utilities, affordable housing, other improvements, which in this case would be those roadway improvements. There's some administrative costs that are allowed, and then certainly interest paid on the debt would be an allowable use. So the total amount that could be expended from this district would match the earnings, or 22.7 million. That number is unlikely to change. But certainly, each of these line items, the actual expenditures could change over time. We monitor it annually and report annually, but that's the budget that we're recommending in the format required by the statute. So in summary, we've evaluated the properties in the district to make sure that it qualifies, and we can confirm that the proposal does qualify as a redevelopment TIF district. We've met with the Planning Commission to obtain confirmation that the development as proposed generally complies with the city's plans for redevelopment, which is the comprehensive plan. We've reviewed the developers' performa and financial outlooks, and we can confirm that due to the high development costs for this building, as well as the restricted income because they're going to have 10% of the units affordably priced, that there is a gap that does require tax increment to bridge. So in conclusion, we find that it cannot reasonably be expected that a proposed development of this scale and quality would happen with affordable housing and with the roadway improvements without the use of tax increment financing. It's staff's recommendation to move forward with this district, subject to the public hearing and further action later in November. With that overview, I'm happy to answer any questions, and turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Questions for Manager Nuenendorf on his presentation, which is similar, very similar to what he presented to the HRA? Yes, Member Pierce?
Yep, thank you. These projects take an enormous amount of time, and I think oftentimes, we kind of forget the process, right, along the journey. But I wanted to just underscore, the way you presented this, you were kind of combining the development project with the roadway project. And the roadway concept was not a part of the original project, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and so what I remember is that there were, we had lots of feedback about challenges to this development. Part of that was related to the roadway, some safety challenges, and I'd like for you to talk about how the city internalized that feedback, and then how we came to the point where we have the proposal with the roadway concept as part of this overall development, because I think it's central to the project.
Sure, let me get started, then I think I'll turn it over to our city engineer, Mr. Milner. So you're correct in that the original proposal that came through did not include $7 million of roadway improvements. It included a singular redevelopment at the Perkins site. And through the extensive zoning conversations and getting input from the community, I think we heard very vocally that other improvements were necessary. So staff investigated different ways to reach those goals, and that's what was presented here. But let me turn it over to Mr. Milner, who was the brains behind that engineering study.
Yeah, if you recall, the original zoning requirement had a condition to say, "Study and suggest improvements to," we're calling it the East Grandview Transportation Study. So we completed that study just a few weeks ago, and in fact, I'm meeting the neighborhood tomorrow. So our intention is to get feedback from the neighborhood on those concepts and come back to the council and have a further discussion about which pieces should we implement as part, you know, if this project keeps going forward and the TIF is available, should we implement it and when? So I think that feedback that we're going to get tomorrow and bring back to the council at a later date really will define those improvements.
Any follow-on, Member Pierce?
No.
Okay. Anyone else at this point in time? No, I don't have any questions at this point in time either. Thank you, Manager Nuenendorf. Standby, there may be some questions raised here. We're going to now open this up for public testimony. I see many of our fellow residents in the audience that are probably from the nearby neighborhood. And then also, with respect to folks that may be listening in online that wish to testify, just a reminder that this is the one and only public hearing matter this evening, and the number to call in is 800-374-0221, and the conference ID number is 3297692. Make sure you give the operator your name and street address and your telephone number. And then when you get ready to get in the queue and want to speak, press star one on your telephone keypad, and then our staff person will bring you in to the council. But let's start with folks in the audience. I'm sure there are people here that wish to testify and have their, share their thoughts with the council. Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Remember, yeah, give us your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes. You'll get a yellow light when you've got about 30 seconds left, and then if you can wrap up your comments right around the time the red light goes on, that'll give everybody a fair opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Hovland and members of the Edina City Council, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Janet Dietrich, and I'm a resident of the Sunny Slope neighborhood. My family and I have lived at 4816 Sunny Slope, Woodhill Way in Sunny Slope for more than 11 years, and my son is a student in the Edina Public School system. Members Staunton and Pierce, you gave your conditional approval to the seven-story design of the Royder Walton Project on the Perkins site based on a commitment to improve the traffic patterns and safety for Sunny Slope residents and the many others who travel West 50th Street. I have read the materials attached to tonight's meeting agenda, and based on what I see, including the picture we saw just a moment ago, I do not believe that your condition has been met. Specifically, I do not believe that adding left-turn lanes to 50th Street, which is the only thing that is really very visible in that diagram, adding left-turn lanes at Dale Drive will address these elements of our concerns around traffic. The speed of traffic on 50th Street, the volume of that traffic, pedestrian and bicycle safety. Please recall that children from the Sunny Slope neighborhood have been hit while on their bicycles along 50th. There is no buffer zone indicated, contemplated, or contemplated between the sidewalk and the lanes of traffic. And access to 50th Street from East Sunny Slope and Dale Drive, especially when trying to head east on 50th, will not be any easier, and in fact, could be more difficult because there are more lanes to cross. I'm concerned that if the corrective action only includes left-turn lanes, safety conditions will deteriorate from current state as drivers speed up because they no longer have to be concerned about cars making left turns. Consequently, Members Staunton and Pierce, you ought to join Member Anderson and retract your conditional approval of the project. Doing so would make this entire conversation about a TIF district a moot point. However, if you're not convinced by this reasoning, let me address the TIF proposal directly. It's disturbing to me that the TIF district designation will last until 2050. That means Edina students and our school district will not get full benefit of the increase in tax revenue until then. Therefore, the first graduating class to fully benefit from this project will be the class of 2063. Students born in 2032, more than 10 years from now, will only see one year's worth of the tax revenue increase accrued to the school district. Why is the council proposing to extend the length of the TIF designation? My read of the documents, especially the part about moving Cahill School and Grange Road, leads me to believe that the intent is to use this TIF to also redevelop the rest of the district, which I think...
Mrs. Dietrich, I need to have you wrap up your comments.
Okay.
You passed the time.
All right. I fear approval of a TIF district tonight lays the groundwork to exacerbate the challenges to access and safety along 50th Street for all Edina residents and our neighbors in southwest Minneapolis. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, Members, hello, Members of the City Council. My name is Steve McCready, and my family and I live on 4916 West Sunny Slope Road. It's actually nice to be able to see everyone here in person today, as we've presented numerous times to the Planning Commission, as well as City Council via Zoom, so it's nice to see everyone. Our comments at the time related to this project were around traffic noise, TIF, and that safety around that 50 and Highway 100 interchange, and how they would alter the character of this neighborhood as well as surrounding areas. We're just beginning to digest the impact of this TIF districts. We've just kind of begun to see the plans and are really trying to consider how that impacts us, as well as the condition that this council placed on the Perkins project around the traffic conditions around the rezoning. Regarding the public value of the TIF dollars to the development, it's hard for me to see the value of $5.1 million going to that project. The reasons that have been stated are public art, the affordable housing, and the potential for a future yet-to-be-designed-or-funded Highway 100 interchange. You know, the public art that they're presenting appears to be a single sculpture that, you know, you probably have about $10,000 worth of work for that piece of public art, hardly worth the $5.1 million. The city of Edina, on March 25th, 2021, revised the multifamily affordable housing policy with a clear intent that affordable housing should be considered a cost of doing business and development of a project this size and scale in the city of Edina. So to use the fact that there is that in this project feels to be disingenuous and not in intent, what the intent of what the affordable housing project was for. So leaving, you know, $5.1 or a good chunk of the money for that future off-ramp, that again, is well into the future and totally unfunded by Mindot at this point. The other use of the TIF appears again for the traffic improvements, of which Mr. Milner commented that our first meeting watch should be tomorrow on that. That's kind of, I guess, too early for us to really react because we haven't heard what's there. We've just been looking at the drawings, and those drawings appear to be, require right-of-ways from some of our neighbors. It appears to require a right-of-way from the, or take of project from the Country Club, and it also requires a redesign of the Perkins apartment projects and their entry as those roundabouts reconfigure how you get in and out of that project. So in some areas, I feel like those traffic mitigation measures need to be studied more detail before we move ahead with establishing a TIF district that approves a project that does not link the road improvements to the development of the building. You mentioned that we're going to wait for one to get almost done before we would take on these massive road improvements around our neighborhood. So with that, I just request that we postpone the approval of this district until we understand in more detail the impact of the traffic around the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCready.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all of you for your service to the community. It's very much appreciated by the community. My name is Paul Porter. I'm here with my wife, Katie LaBaron. We live at 4928 Dale Drive. We're your nearest neighbor. We're just across the street on the corner here. And so I could probably, if I, no, you can see the cursor. The house is right there. That's where we live. Chad, tomorrow, you're going to meet with us, and you're going to hear in there an earful. We're concerned, this is a roadway concept, but yet it's a final design, approval pending. We're confused on that. Look at this intersection. It's not even an intersection, really. Currently, there's five lanes across here. This design suggests there's going to be six. Figure that out. That seems like it's going to speed up traffic, not slow it down. Chad, you've told me personally that the average speed on Highway 50, sorry, on 50th Street is 36 miles an hour. I think that's correct. That means that if somebody's going the speed limit at 30, there's another car that has to average 42 to get to that 36. People are going very quickly down 50th. It's not a safe environment. I don't see, on this diagram, I don't see the sidewalks, I don't see the bike lanes. It's not clear what the light blue lines mean. Are those sidewalks? Are those blocking off entrance to northbound Highway 100? I don't think so. This, to me, does not look like an improvement to the situation that I and my neighbors feel that are, that we come before you for. And so we look forward to a constructive dialogue, and we hope, I would like to suggest that before, that it'd be nice if you would finalize this roadway concept and really, truly know how traffic is going to be improved before you vote on the creation of the, what you call it, Eden Wilson TIF district. So with that, I'll cede my time. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for those comments, Paul.
Good evening. My name is Bill Bailey. Address is 4808 East Sunny Slope Road. I don't have any notes or anything, I'm just going to speak from the heart. Our family moved to Edina in 1958, so we have decades of history in this community. And over that time, I saw how our community set a benchmark for, for a gold standard. Other communities really looked to us because we were doing it right. And I don't know anything about TIF districts or anything else, but I get the feeling that the city, we're whoring ourselves, is the best word I could think of. We're whoring ourselves because we're giving money to developers when, in my opinion, it should be a privilege for a developer to come into our town and build a project. Let's take this project. If this TIF doesn't go through, is this developer going to pack up his tools and go to Eden Prairie, go to St. Louis Park, go to New Hope, Golden Valley, Ridgefield? No, no, he wants to build in Edina, because it's a privilege to build in Edina. So that's all I have to say. My number-one priority is the safety of the kids in our neighborhood, and I'm not seeing anything in this proposal that addresses that. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Anyone else wish to speak to the council? Express your thoughts. Express your thoughts.
Good evening.
My name is Steve Dietrich, and I live at 4816 Woodhill Way. And first of all, thank you for your service to the city. I am not in favor of UVs TIF for this project. I think it shortchanges our school system. My wife and I moved to the school system specifically for the education system, and I'm disappointed that this would shortchange the school system. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Anyone else? Okay. Dan, do we have anybody online that wishes to testify?
Mr. Mayor, we do have one caller in the queue to speak, so if the operator could please unmute the line of Ms. Hope Milton. And once she is unmuted, she may go ahead and please state name and address for the record.
Thank you, Dan.
Good evening. My name is Hope Milton. I live at 4825 Valley View Road in Edina, and I'm probably going to be the first one to speak positively about this project. Mayor and members of the City Council, my comments are in support of Resolution 2021-99 to establish the Eden-Wilson Tax Increment Financing District. This resolution enables a win-win-win scenario whereby the city creates an attractive mixed-use housing development that will enhance its property base, provide funding for the onsite improvement of public land, provide 20 units of much-needed affordable housing integrated within a market-rate building, and also provide funding for improvements to a roadway network that's been a problem for several years. The project has already cleared a number of significant hurdles, giving it significant momentum on its way to approval. It qualifies under state regulations for TIF funding. The other taxing agencies involved in the district have so far not expressed concerns regarding its creation. It's been reviewed by the Edina Heritage Park and Recreation and Planning Commissions and the Historical Society, and it has won approval by the HRA. Finally, the Eden-Wilson supports all its intended purposes as it provides easy access to transit, employment, and basic needs commercial services such as grocery and drugstores. We need the traffic and public land improvements this project provides. We very badly need its affordable housing integrated into this market-rate building and by location into a neighborhood. This project is well on its way to final approval. Let's give it the TIF funding it needs to get over the finish line. Thank you very much for your attention. I encourage you to approve Resolution 2021-99. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milton. Folks, we've got others in the neighborhood here. Anyone else wish to testify and share their thoughts with the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll also let you know we do have one additional caller in queue.
Oh, thank you.
So if the operator can unmute the line of Julie Rissler and Ms. Rissler, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Julie Rissler. I live at 6112 Ashcroft Avenue. And I would just like the council to consider that when a warning TIF, the bar should be high. This project is out of compliance with our comprehensive plan. It's for a parcel that lies outside the area of change. It's also a parcel, if you go and you look at the comp plan for future land use, the density, housing density, is to be between 12 and 100 units per acre. The proposal is for 208 units per acre. The frustrating thing for me as a citizen is I can't find anywhere the buildable acreage for this site. All right? I can see in a plan that there's 1.84 acres, but that includes land that is not going to be made available, land that will be to the left, to the west of the proposed road. So that's a problem. What exactly, how far in discrepancy is this 208 units of housing? And it's really important to think about that because we do have an area where we have traffic, pedestrian, bike problems. Yes, some of the changes will help mitigate that, but it's not going to solve all of it. The other thing is that you've got this parcel, and this is kind of the elephant in the room, further to the south. That's also outside the area of change. It's also proposed for the same land use. I imagine in two years or less, we're going to be talking about PUD-ing that land and building a large complex of housing, more density, more traffic. I live on Valley View Road, and I have seen just how there is such a push in terms of granting what developers want, and it's resulting in narrower access in terms of the roads, the sidewalks, all of that, and increased traffic. The other thing I would like to add is that, great, you know, we're talking about historical buildings and doing preservation, but I also think there needs to be standards in terms of signage and also in terms of online content. And I would encourage every single person who is on the council to go across Grange Road, take a look at those signs, and really think about the reality that the historical lens that is being used at those sites is so narrow. The only name people. Are they all men? They're all of European ancestry? We know that we had diversity. We have diversity, that we have participation on the historical levels that are connected to those two buildings. It's an embarrassment to look at those signs. They are old. They are inaccurate. It's not an appropriate narrative. To award TIF for physical improvements is one thing, but if we're going to use our historical resources to promote a narrative that is inaccurate and biased and problematic, why are we investing in these buildings at all? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rissler. Anyone else wish to testify? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody here. Dan, anybody else online that wishes to testify?
There are no other callers on the line.
All right, good. Folks, it's been our practice during the, you know, the use of this hybrid methodology. We're going to keep this matter open for further comment, testimony, calls, written materials until noon on the 25th of October, and then we won't decide this until the November 3rd meeting. So I'm going to ask now for a motion from one of my colleagues to close the public hearing at noon on October 25th and then continue the action to the November 3rd City Council meeting. Is there a motion of that effect?
Still moved.
Got a motion of Member Jackson?
Second.
Second from Member Pierce. Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing at noon on October 25th and continuing the action on the item to the November 3rd City Council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Carried. Thank you, folks.
Mr. Mayor, can we ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, I think we could, now that the motion's passed. Go ahead.
One question I have for Mr. Nuenendorf is, where did he go? There he is. Talk to me a little bit about the timing relative to the project because I understand, I understand this is creating the TIF district. It is not approving the project. It is not approving any expenditures on the TIF district, but its creation of the TIF district. Why now?
That's a good question. I didn't have a canned answer for that one. Why now? Because the project is ready. So we, the developer has a purchase option on the building that expires in the next few months. They've prepared, and I believe they've submitted their final development plans to carry. I think those will be up for the City Council review in a few weeks. The developer is ready to proceed, and this is the window. This is the time to take that action. Again, there are two different steps. First is to create the district. The second is to consider the TIF arrangement with the developer, but they're ready to go, and if that window closes, they will be not ready to go.
And then if we were to create the TIF district, how long would we have to use the TIF district, use monies that might be accumulated in the TIF district?
Sure. So we're recommending that a 25-year district be created. In Minnesota statute, there's a five-year rule, which means that you have five years to take action and commit to funding. So for the redevelopment of the Perkins, we think we could make that commitment by the end of this year, probably in November. That's what staff will recommend. And for the roadway improvements, we could drag that out. I don't think it's the intention to delay it, but there's no urgency to approve that roadway design right away. As City Engineer Milner had mentioned, we just received the engineering study, and there's still some steps to go on that one, some finessing, I think, that will probably be necessary in that plan. So we have five years to make those types of decisions. And the same for those historic buildings. Over the decades, I think there's been at least four studies to relocate those buildings, and each time the study generally ends at the conclusion of, seems like we want to move them, it's going to be expensive, and we're not sure where they're going to go, so let's just keep them where they are. With this tax increment package, we could at least solve the funding issue.
So one of the questions I have, I mean, I appreciate the five-year answer, but so if we didn't, for some reason, approve this particular project, we would have five years for another project to surface that we could, that could create some kind of increment that we could then use for things, for the things you're describing?
Potentially, sure. If we create the district in 2021, and if we, if the private development at Perkins doesn't proceed, we still have five years for something else to maybe happen?
Okay. And then, and this may be a question that is more appropriately brought back to us at the next meeting, but I heard a couple of the commenters talk about taking money from the schools, and I know it's a longer answer than just a quick sentence or two, but I'd like you to address that issue because I think it misunderstands the way TIF works.
Sure, so I'll try to cover that briefly. So today, the property, and I don't have precise numbers, but today, the property pays about $100,000 in property taxes every year. Probably a third of that goes to the schools, so let's call it $35,000. That money will always go to the schools, whether or not this project happens. If the existing Perkins stays there for another 10 years, the schools will continue to get about $35,000 a year in property taxes. With this proposal, the taxes paid by the development will increase from about, from about $100,000 to nearly $600,000. So in the interim, when the TIF district is in place, the school's share will be frozen at what it is today, but when the district releases, it'll go from, you know, $35,000 to $350,000, and then factor in inflation.
But the school district, even if it went up by $600,000 tomorrow, the school district wouldn't get any more money?
That's correct, yes. Minnesota has a complex taxing structure, so when the city or the schools or the county creates their tax levy, they're always kept whole if they need, you know...
It's just how it gets distributed among the taxpayers.
Exactly.
So the pie gets sliced up. If this project were to add more tax value, it would just mean others would pay less. But the schools aren't going to get any less money in any event, right?
Correct. The schools will always be protected when TIF is used.
All right, thank you.
I think that was important to Mr. Dietrich and others as well, I'm sure, than this. I'm hopeful that explanation helps folks understand. Member Jackson had a question or two.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question, and that is, including these historic buildings in the TIF district in no way obligates us to develop that land. Is that correct?
That's completely correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then, as I recall, when you made other presentations, and we've talked about the potential establishment of a TIF district, my recollection is that in this case, if a TIF district were established, with respect to all the traffic concerns that we've heard expressed, both at the original public hearing where the project received preliminary approval and this evening, that the TIF district establishment would help create the sources of revenue for the roadway improvements that we all think are important to get done.
That's correct. Right now, there's, I stand to be correct, but there's no roadway improvements anticipated in this area in the city's current CIP, our capital improvement plan. So for at least the next five years, there's nothing on the books. This TIF district would expedite all of those improvements.
Director Milner, you concur?
That is correct, Mayor.
All right. So when Mr. McCready has asked the question, are the improvements linked to the proposed improvement on the Perkins site, are they linked to the roadway improvements? Your answer would be yes. They are linked.
They're integrally linked, yep. They would not happen without the other.
All right. And then Paul, and I didn't quite get his last name, these masks make it difficult to understand, but who lives over on Dale Drive, our nearest neighbor, had a suggestion that we finalize the roadway concept before addressing the TIF district issues. What are your thoughts on that?
You know, let me clarify one item, then Mr. Milner can respond. So there is a typo that the gentleman identified on this particular slide where it says "final design approval pending." I erroneously copied that from the previous page. This is a conceptual design, so that's an error on my part, but Mr. Milner can describe the...
All right, yeah, thanks for making that observation. I think that's important, too.
So, yeah, Mayor, like we mentioned, we're going to meet with the neighborhood tomorrow, get some feedback. I'm going to discuss what all the colors mean, the lines mean, the safety improvements we see as part of this study, these concepts. Again, it's a concept, so these are, what I would say is, from a width standpoint and property impacts, probably the worst-case scenario. There's five-foot boulevards, 10-foot shared-use paths on each side. If it gets to be a property impact on the north, which the gentleman spoke to, that's where we can start to adjust traffic lanes, boulevard widths, and all these other widths with the final design. So this is strictly a concept, just to have a conversation with the neighborhood and bring that feedback back to the council.
Okay. So do either of you think there's anything adverse in, let's say hypothetically, establishing a TIF district here that would preclude us from going forward with these plans to make sure that we create a transportation system that works effectively both for motorized and non-motorized movements?
I think without the TIF, they won't happen in the short term, like we talked about. That is our opportunity here to improve the network, both on Eden, Wilson, Grange, and 50th, with these three, with the concept here shown. So without the TIF, it's not in the five-year plan, like Mr. Nuenendorf mentioned, and I don't know when we'd be back to make some of those improvements.
I think this prompted something for Member Pierce to ask as a follow-on.
Yeah, just to clarify, I part of, maybe even restate it. Without the TIF district, there's not enough funding available to do the concept of redesign in the roadway?
Correct.
That's correct.
That's correct. So our current program looks at needs, pavement condition, water, main sewer. This area is not in that queue for priority to be at the top of the list. The second reason why it's not funded in the near term is this is state aid dollars in that it's an 80% fund from the gas tax. We are out, we can only do about a half-mile every two to three years, and we are way on the priority list. This isn't even on my radar yet for those kind of dollars.
Yeah, no, thanks for that further clarification. And then I guess the only other thing I would add, it is my belief that if we are doing development around the city, that it is incumbent on us to try to use that development to further the design within the community. And so that was my original comment about conditional approval, because there are several things that we can do to improve this roadway, to address some of the traffic, adding a boulevard, adding more bike lanes... boulevard, adding more bike lanes. All of that is in the broader plan, but in terms of when that would happen, it's further into the future because of the funding aspect. And so, I just think, in principle, for me, it makes sense for us to try to further the benefit for the community, and if we can tie that to development, I think that that's a wise approach.
Manager Neil?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. There was a question raised earlier about whether the developer is taking advantage of us as a city. I think the reverse is really more true. We are trying to take advantage of this development opportunity to bring value to a project, to create a revenue stream, to do a project that we wouldn't ordinarily be able to do, because it doesn't, as Mr. Milner has said, doesn't rise to a spot in our queue where it's funded. So, I think it's opportunistic. I think it's good opportunism that benefits our residents.
Thank you. Director Nuenendorf, or Manager Nuenendorf, one of the things we talked about at the HRA was the sort of informal rule that we follow here on when we do use TIFF, what percent of the project should that TIFF represent potentially? We typically use that 10% of, I think it's market value. Here, you might explain to folks, at least what you're proposing, is whether that's within that normal range that we think is appropriate to use TIFF.
Sure. So, a standard rule of thumb, when you consider the use of tax increment financing for private development, is that the project should be at least 90% privately funded, and that tax increment should be used for no more than 10%. That's not a law, it's not a rule, but it is best practice. In this particular project, the request is about 6% of their cost, and the developer has agreed to include the affordable housing in his project, as opposed to waiving that and doing a different solution for affordable housing. So, the 6% in my mind is a bargain, considering we'll get 20-some years of affordability in this project, plus the public improvements.
All right. I want to turn back to Director Milner. If I understand what you were saying correctly, what I hear is that if this TIFF district weren't established, and if the project weren't finally approved, you'd put everything on hold. All these ideas you got would go on the shelf, and you might not be back to talk to the neighborhood for in excess of five years.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Other questions? All right. Okay, we've got this matter continued until the 3rd of November, and folks can continue to make comments either for or against, or express their concerns, up to noon on October 25th, and then we'll close the public hearing. So, thanks for coming out this evening, and appreciate all your input. Now, we're going to move on to reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. We've got several matters to deal with there. We had public hearings last meeting, a couple of weeks ago, on a variety of proposed special assessments, and Tom Swenson, our Assistant Director of Parks and Natural Resources, is with us this evening, as he was two weeks ago. And the first matter we're going to take up tonight is Resolution 2120-80, which is a potential weed mowing special assessment. Director Swenson?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I do have one update since the last meeting. Staff did remove 6708 Cornelia Drive from the assessment rule, so we go from 12 properties down to 11 properties. The owner has been interacting with us since receiving notifications, and has been very proactive, so we removed that one item from the rule. But the other 11 properties, we are asking that they be assessed.
All right. Does anybody have any follow-on questions for Mr. Swenson, for Director Swenson, based on the testimony that he offered a couple of weeks ago? All right. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-80, the Weed Mowing Special Assessment, embodied in Improvement Number WD-21?
So moved.
Second. Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution 2021-80, which is the Weed Mowing Special Assessment on the defined properties on the list, Improvement Number WD-21, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Next matter was the Tree Removal Special Assessment. We had diseased trees that we removed, in some cases at residents' requests, and they've got certain assessments attached to them. I think, Manager Neil, you wanted to talk a little bit about one of the items that we heard about on Seven Woodland Road, I believe.
I do. Thank you, Your Honor. I was not at the last meeting, so I wasn't here to be part of that discussion, but I think it was clear to me, after watching the tape of the meeting, that our communications with the property owner at Seven Wooddale Drive really felt short. I think we probably met the... We certainly met the legal definition of what we had to do to make it a legal notification, but we can do better than that, and then we'll do better than that. I'm going to suggest to you tonight that you adopt the full assessment schedule, with the exception of that one, and give direction to staff to meet directly with that property owner and bring back a finished resolution to that issue at your next council meeting on November 3rd. We would also, at that time, bring to you a new policy or protocol about how we will notify folks involved in this kind of assessment in the future.
Prompt any questions from council members or comments? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-81, which is the Tree Removal Special Assessment, Improvement Number TR-21, with the exception of the removal from that assessment rule of, I think it's Seven Woodland Road?
Seven Woodland Road, that's correct.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Staunton, with regard to Resolution 2021-81, the Tree Removal Special Assessment. Any further discussion? Also, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2021-81, the Tree Removal Special Assessment, Improvement Number TR-21, with the exception of Seven Woodland Road, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. Next matter is the Proposed Grandview Business District Special Assessment Improvement G-21. Any further comment there, Director Swenson?
No updates on that one.
All right. Any questions for Director Swenson on that matter? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-82, which would provide for assessments in the Grandview Business District, embodied in Improvement Number G-21?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Jackson, to approve Resolution 2021-82, which is the Grandview Business District Special Assessment Improvement G-21. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. Next matter is the Aquatic Vegetation Special Assessment Improvement Number AQ-21. We had Jessica Wilson with us the last time to talk about this, Aquatic Vegetation Special Assessment. This is the Mill Pond and Indian Head Lake, Arrowhead Lake, Lake Nancy, residents that want us to try to help keep the water as clean as we can, and then we specially assess them. Is there any... Are there any questions for Director Milner, who is standing in for Ms. Wilson? All right. Member Jackson?
Yes. Can you give us an update, then, on how your meeting with the neighbors went on the Mill Pond?
Oh, that's still ongoing. We sent out a letter. Jessica will be in touch with the Mill Pond folks, and that just the two weeks isn't enough time to complete that kind of conversation, so...
Okay. So, that's not part of our motion tonight?
No, no. That was just an extra topic we thought we'd ask you last time, so we're asking you to approve this resolution. There was no further... No comments, period, on this resolution, so we asked for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Okay, it's moved by Member Jackson. Second. Member Anderson, seconds?
Second.
Thank you. The Resolution 2021-83, the Aquatic Vegetation Special Assessment, moved by Member Jackson, second by Member Anderson. It's embodied in Improvement AQ-21. Got a motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution 2021-83, the Aquatic Vegetation Special Assessment Improvement Number AQ-21, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. Next matter, Director Milner's going to take this one on as well. This is the Proposed Special Assessments for the property owners at 50th and France, and that's embodied in Resolution 2021-84. That is called the 50th and France Business District Special Assessment. Anybody have any questions for Director Milner? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-84, which would provide for those special assessments for those property owners at 50th and France?
So moved.
Got a motion by Member Anderson, second by Member Staunton, to adopt Resolution 2021-84, the 50th and France Business District Special Assessment, embodied in Improvement M-21. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. And then, Resolution Number 2021-85 is another one that Director Milner has, which is West 58th Street Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Special Assessment. Any questions for Director Milner on that matter? Any further comments, Director Milner, from the hearing we had a couple of weeks ago?
No comments received, Mayor.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-85, which handles the West 58th Street Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Special Assessments, embodied in Improvement BA-456?
So moved.
Member Staunton moves?
Second.
Member Anderson, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. We're getting there. Next matter is Resolution 2021-86, Certification of Delinquent Utilities. We had an in-depth conversation about those delinquent utilities. We had some on the list that were fairly high. Alicia McAndrews has this. I'm guessing that Manager Neil may have this. No?
No, she is joining us virtually.
Oh, is she? Okay. Well, there she is. Thank you for joining us.
I'm here virtually.
Director McAndrews.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Director McAndrews on the certification of those delinquent utilities? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-86, which would authorize certification of those delinquent utilities that would be embodied in Action DU-21? List DU-21.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Pierce, to adopt the Resolution 2021-86, which certifies the delinquent utilities to the county. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. Next matter is, we're going to take ourselves away from the types of matters we've been working on here, and now we're going to go to Director Teague with regard to Resolution 2021-88, which is a preliminary rezoning and preliminary development plan with multiple variances for city homes at 4630 France Avenue. And, Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Sorry to slow things down here, but... So, this is the request that you considered a couple of weeks ago. It's a proposal to tear down the existing single-family home and build two villa-style homes. The planning commission recommendation and the staff recommendation is for approval of the rezoning, and two of the variances, that is for the side yard setbacks and the lot size. We recommend that the rear yard setback be denied, and the lot coverage variance be denied. You may recall, the applicant did revise the plans a couple of weeks ago to eliminate that rear yard setback and the lot coverage, the lot coverage variance. At the public hearing, many of the neighbors were concerned about that back home, the single-family home on the west side of the property, and how it impacted their rear yards. The applicant had indicated that, and the neighborhood did express some... They seemed okay with the duplex, but that duplex being shifted closer to France Avenue. The applicant expressed some concerns about if they were to do that, the turning radius of the driveway, were the units connected? Staff does concur with that, that if those were connected, the turning radius would be very tight there. Included in your packet is a template of turning radius standards that demonstrate how difficult that would be. We did... We have received a number of comments on Better Together. Again, a big concern about that backyard zone, and a preference for a twin home rather than two single-family units. There was a number of questions that were asked in letters that were received, and I'll respond to those. The proposal here is for detached dwellings. The homes to the north, they are attached to attached duplexes that share a driveway. The comparisons that staff was making is really in regard to the lot arrangements, not necessarily the exact development to the north. So, the comparison here is lot behind lots, dividing this property into two lots for single-family homes. The square footage of the lots to the north does not include the driveway. The square footage of the driveway is included in the lot, so there is a difference there. The comprehensive plan, this site is guided for low-density attached residential housing. Within that definition of low-density attached residential, single-family homes detached residential are allowed, in addition to attached housing. There was a question about the city's ability to require the 10-foot easement along France for pedestrian improvements. It kind of... The reason we can do that, it's part of that give-to-get. They're asking for variances and a rezoning here. They're agreeable to that, so in the future, when this... If sidewalk improvements are made along France, the city would have that right-of-way. In regard to front yard setbacks, to clarify those, in our 1 and our 2 zoning districts, the standard is established by either one of two ways, either averaging the setbacks all along the block, or the average of the setbacks to the homes on either side. The structure to the north has a 48.9-foot setback, the structure to the south, 44.9. The proposal here is for a 30-foot setback. That is the minimum standard in the PRD 2 zoning district, which is what's requested here. So, that easternmost structure would extend about 15 feet in front of the existing structures on either side. There was also some...
Can I just jump in there?
Sure.
But if it remained R1, how far would the house have to be set back?
It would have to be the average of that 48.9 and 44.9, so somewhere around 45 feet back.
Okay. Thank you.
There was also questions asked about if the home were torn down in a new single-family home built on the site. The building pad, and I provided a couple of graphics in the packet that showed a couple of different alternative building pad sites. One pushed way to the back with a 25-foot setback on the rear yard, and the other at that 45, roughly 45-foot setback to France.
Can we put those up on the screen?
I could do that.
He helped.
So, this building pad here is roughly 40 by 60 feet, so it's about a 2,400-square-foot building pad. That's in order to meet the building coverage requirement?
This is if it were R1, if it remained R1?
Correct.
That's the furthest back that it could be pushed?
That's the furthest back.
And how far back is that on that drawing?
Would that be...
So, it's gonna be...
I thought they had to be 35 feet from the rear setback.
In an R1 district, the setback requirement is 25 feet.
So, and on the front, they have a limitation on how close they can go to France, but they don't have any limitation on how far back they can go from France?
Correct. Yeah, this here would be about 110 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
And can you just, with the same view, the current dwelling is where on here?
I believe the current dwelling is more in line with the homes on either side.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It is.
So that's the, that's the, the front or the rear?
So France is on the right-hand side.
This is France on this side.
And so the current property, the, the front of it is where you're outlining?
Right about here.
Okay. Thanks.
And if they were to move it up front, it would be about forty-eight feet, and again, with about a, just under twenty-five hundred square foot building pad.
And the pad is limited in the R-one by a lot coverage maximum, which is what, thirty percent?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to add, if, if that were the zoning for it, nothing would come to council for that?
Correct.
The developer would just file the permit and proceed.
That's right. This would be code compliant. They could just proceed to building permit. So in conclusion, in your, in your packets, there are two alternatives, one for approval and one for denial. But again, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval, subject to those findings and conditions that are outlined in the resolution. With that, I can stand for questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Questions for Director Teague, yes?
So can you also pull up the turning radius? Because we had some questions about that. So some of the neighbors-
There it is, right there.
Some of the neighbors had suggested, what if we can put them together, what would happen? And what if they were pulled apart? And the applicant had told us that he didn't think that the radius could make it if they were put together, and so, so can you just explain where this came from? Who created it? What it means?
Yeah, this, this was created by the applicant. This is the, the standard turning radius template. I could turn it over to Director Milner, who is much more knowledgeable about these than I am.
That'd be great.
Yeah, the applicant put this together, and I reviewed it to make sure that they were using a relevant turning template for passenger vehicle. So what you can see on the left-hand side, if you were backing out a typical passenger car, in one movement, you would cross that property line. So there's, there's a way you could do this if you did a three-point turn. But when I think about it, is that really what you want? If you drive out of your garage, or back out, and you got to do a three-point turn every time? When I think about my teenage girls or my older family members, I'd rather do it right the first time. And in my opinion, doing it right is a, is a one-move back out of the garage. So this is showing that movement, that with them together, you, you can't do it within the property line in one movement. It is correct, you could do it with a three-point turn, but you're doing that every time you leave your garage.
So can you just show with the cursor what you mean by a three-point turn?
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna back up till your bumper gets to the property line, pull ahead slightly, back up again to get enough space.
Oh, okay, so you're just jockeying.
You jockey in like twice.
Might take a five-point turn.
Yep.
Okay.
Depending how well you leave your garage, so.
Okay. And then the, the top one was the turning radius on the existing? Is that right? And this is the proposed plan?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Member Anderson?
Yeah, thank you, Director Milner. I'm wondering about the juxtaposition of the garage to the, on the, on the twin home plan, and the turning radius difficulties encountered there. That's, I think, the preceding slide, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm scrolling it up. It's the bottom of this one?
Yeah.
Sorry, Carrie.
Just, this one? Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so is there any relationship between, say, the, the size of the garage door with the ease of pulling in, or even the location of the garage? Is it possible, if the, if, in a twin home plan, that the garages could be offset, are moved closer to the side yard? We're asking for a lot of variances in this, in this application, one way or the other. If those garages were moved closer to the side yard, and if there were, say, wider garage doors, along with what sometime they called a rat tail here in terms of, you know, the, the pad to pull out and move forward, can that be accommodated in that type of concept?
If I'm hearing you right, Member Anderson, moving those garages north, closer to the property line, I guess that would-
Director Milner, might be good if you go up to the main drawing and use some, either pencil or the cursor to track along here, so we can follow you easier.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, it's moving this garage further north-
Yep.
-to make enough space so this movement can happen.
Yes.
I guess I can't speak to that because I didn't look at that, and I don't know if the applicant did, but if I just look at this space here, it appears it's as big or larger than this. So I don't know if it would work or not. I mean, I think then you get into variances for side yard setbacks there.
Okay. Well, yes, I agree with that. But there's so many variances involved in this application. This would be a variation on a variance, yes. I, I, well, okay, thank you.
I don't think the garage door would change it. You see, the, the, the car itself is lined up with the edges of the garage door here.
Yeah.
You know, if you put one car in at an angle, well, that defeats the purpose of a two-car garage.
I agree.
So.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Member Pierce.
So could you, with this graphic, and then the planning commission's approval, subject to the conditions that are in here, can I, can you just illustrate where that is, what this, the properties would be? I get the front, the front setback, but, but in relationship to what they're originally proposed? So, so when I look at this, like, this looks fine, but we're not seeing it from the context of the neighborhood. And so I'm trying to, to get a view.
Oh, you want an aerial view of the neighborhood? I can show you an aerial-
That would answer the question.
Without the concept, I don't have.
Yeah, but then you can just illustrate on the aerial view, the conditions that the planning commission is recommending. There you go.
So while Chad's pulling that up, what the planning commission is recommending is what was on the screen there, that colored graphic?
Yep.
That, that is?
The last one that was up there.
Correct.
Yep.
It's tough to see with all the trees.
Do the best you can, Director Milner. I know you can do it.
So you're looking at where the existing project is going to fall?
Yep.
Maybe Carrie could speak to that better than I can.
So you can, you can make out the structure to the north, right here, to give you a little context, so you can see it would extend beyond the back of that building, if that helps. And you can see the single-family home here to the south.
Member Anderson, were you, did you finish up on the questions that you wanted to ask?
Well, that was my only question. I probably have some comments prior to voting, but that was, those were the questions.
Member Jackson, did you have any questions? It still strikes me as, I don't remember the gentleman's name from the neighborhood that had this notion of, if you scroll up to the, to the one that's below it, they're butting the garages up to each other. And, you know, I know you got to clear that garage wall, and then you got to crank it, but it almost seems like in that West Twin Home, that if that first segment were maybe a pavers, you know, that you could back out and back, you could back up. You'd have enough room once you cleared the garage corner to turn and back up into that space towards the word lawn. So I, I, you know, I don't know, maybe, did you use just normal turning radius designs to illustrate these car movements, or is this something done by the applicant?
This was done by the applicant, but I just made sure the template was for a typical passenger vehicle, the radius that they used. So I think if you add specifics, maybe there-
What would be the consequence of moving that West Twin Home further west to align with that building to the north, which is, which is already there, of course, and in the, in the visual sight of everybody to the south? Would that create enough extra space where you could allow those turning movements out of the garage? So the garages are either bigger, or they're a little bit disconnected. Maybe you've got some separation there of a, it would just be a matter of a few feet, it looks like. That way you preserve most of the lawn in the back and that long view north to south, but maybe you still create the possibility of being able to create this situation where you got twin homes, which is a good product, but you've done it in a way where you don't have to do it the way the applicant is suggesting, and, and encroach into all that open space in the back here, you know, that would affect the view through all the backyards. I don't know. We don't, I mean, I'm just standing here speculating. I don't, I don't know. I'm just telling you, those are things that, that come to mind, as we try to find a solution here that, that works for everybody. Because I was, I was persuaded by one thing I heard at the, at the hearing, and that is that if somebody tore that house down and wanted to build a single-family home, they could go, they could go twenty-five feet from the rear lot line if they wanted to. You know? But this building would be forty-five feet from the rear lot line, is what I remember. So there's at least another ten feet that you picked up there. So it's, I mean, those are the, kind of the issues that rail around for me. Member Pierce, you had something else you were thinking about? Member Jackson?
Yeah, your comments about the single-family home. I'm thinking about the drop-off, and Carrie, if you could pull up the, the plan, the elevation of this backyard, the drop-off is pretty dramatic. And I'm thinking, if I were going to be building a single-family home and I was going to have kids in the yard, I would put, I think there, you know, is there a picture on there that shows the elevation? I think in the-
The property's on the building frame, right?
Yeah.
On the building pad, exactly.
Member Jackson, it's about a ten-foot, twelve-foot drop, the last third of the lot, looking at some contours I have here on my computer.
Yeah, so if you were going to build a single-family home, you wouldn't go all the way back? You're saying you'd go-
Well, I, I just, I think it would influence the way I would build the home.
It's a good way to put it.
You know, whether you'd want to, it, it, I just remember it going, like that, pretty, pretty dramatically when I was overlooking at it, with sound effects, yes. And I don't know, you know, I, I don't build single-family homes for a living, so I don't know the placement, but it is, it is a drop-off, but the setback could be dramatically farther to the west than what we're looking at in this proposal. It's really difficult.
Yep. Member Pierce?
I like puzzles. This isn't one that I want to solve. So I just wanted to say that. It's, it's fun to, to solve puzzles, but this isn't one that I actually want to solve. So.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.
How many single-family homes are there to the south?
Just the one. I believe it's duplexes.
The others are duplexes?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. It looked like, it looks like a single, they look like single-family homes, but they're duplexes, as I remember two of them.
I don't have, I don't have my presentation from, from last week.
It's a beautiful product, I have to say that, that you're proposing.
So the property to the north is PRD-two as well?
Correct.
But it just chose to be set back further than it was, than it had to be?
It did, yeah. I tried to, I wasn't able to find any history on-
Okay.
-on exactly when that happened, and that was the setbacks that, that they chose there. The applicant is here, if you have questions for, for him, if you're considering wanting an alternative?
Yeah, I guess I would like to speak to the applicant.
Hi, Dave Remick with City Homes.
Great, thank you so much.
Yes.
The first question I have for you is, how long has this property been empty? Do you know?
My understanding is the property's been vacant for years, twenty years.
Okay.
It was fairly damaged, I think, with like a hole in the roof for a long period of time.
Okay. And, and, and you just recently acquired it?
We've, not closed on it yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
If we don't approve this, this evening, would you go forward with anything, or what would, what would your next steps be?
We'd have to consult with the seller, I would think, but as far as, I think the shortcomings of the, the twin home approach would not make that a desirable project, I think, just because of the, we were only showing the right side of the garage. If you go even to the, for the left, the turn gets much more difficult out of there, and you have to assume you're going to have cars, two cars in each garage. So I think to assume you're going to be able to, you know, maneuver that very much is low. And then, so that's the answer on, on that question. And as a home builder, I, I think a lot of people would view the backyard as probably moving further back, because that would, the drop really does facilitate a, a very nice walkout setup with, with the back.
Okay, so if you were to build a single-family home, it'd be farther back rather than closer to France?
Yes.
It'd be the preference?
Yes.
Okay.
In my opinion. Obviously, anybody can do what they want.
Yeah, yeah. But you wouldn't consider building a single-family home? You would, you would, you know, you're looking at, at building this as an R-two?
That's what, the R-two is kind of what makes the whole puzzle solvable.
Okay. Okay. Great, that's, that's helpful for me.
Proposed zoning is PRD-two.
Any other questions from council members for City Homes? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I'm sorry, the, the current version of the plan has how far setback from the front and the rear?
The front setback would be thirty feet, and the rear setback would be thirty-five feet.
Okay.
So if it were a single-family home, again, we're plowing old ground here, but if it was R-one, the setback would be about forty-four feet in the front, twenty-five feet in the back.
It would be, yeah, it would be the average of the home to the north and the south, and it comes-
Which was roughly in the forty-four foot range.
Yeah, maybe a little more.
Now they're moving, they're pushing it closer to France, having a little bit.
Correct.
Thirty-five feet in the back. Anybody else getting a slow load here tonight? I'm getting-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may.
Yes. Member Anderson, go ahead, you've got a few comments.
I do, thank you very much.
Thank you for reminding me.
There were, I think, at least three, and I don't know, maybe, maybe all members of the council were on-site over there with Mr. Fishman at various points in time. And I have some impressions from walking the site and taking a look at the quad homes next door. Number one is that the, well- Number one is that the, well, first of all, we have been spending some time, some consideration to finding opportunities where there could be some upzoning, where the possibility, where it can fit in, where maybe a double fits in here, where it's currently a single-family. This site seems to me to be an opportunity to consider that on. But, but the mass of the two detached villa homes there just seems burdensome to a narrow city lot. And I think a lot of that's created by placing what is essentially two single-family homes on that site. That's, that's hard. They face each other. If they were attached and turned facing either east or west, or, excuse me, north or south, the footprint's reduced and it's more workable to the site. And I know, and it was reiterated tonight, that the applicant has testified that it's really not workable because of the restricted turning radius. I think that there may be a way to overcome that, but it would mean, going back to the design board and taking a look, we're pretty close, seems to me. And I just wonder if there isn't a, another way. We've discussed the possibility of an offset garage design. That would require further variances. The four-lot detached development to the north features a large common area, so that allows for easier turns and essentially creates larger lots there for that, for that development. I think that the key for me, and what really got my attention over there, was that the application is for rezoning to PRD2 from R1 rather than R2, so that the significant difference for purposes of this project are the front yard setback requirements. I want to, Director Teague was kind enough to go through those with me this morning. And I want to mention that R1, as he mentions, has the average front yard setback of the dwellings on the block or the average setback on the homes of either side, which is somewhere between 14.9 and 19.8, I believe. The R2 front yard setback requirement, that's the average of the front yard setback of the dwellings on the block, the whole block is considered. The average setback of the homes on either side, on either side, in PRD2 is 30 feet. So with the duplex to the north at 48.9 and the single-family home to the south at a 44.9, using the 30-foot front yard setback, where this proposal puts the easterly elevation of the second, the front villa home, about minimum of 14 feet over the neighbor to the north and some 18 to 19 feet over the neighbor to the south. That's a, that's a large building. And visually, it seems like that building coming out that close to France begins to loom over the sidewalk and certainly diminishes the two properties on either side. Now, it doesn't mean that that's not possible, but I do think it's kind of out of place in the neighborhood, and I don't think it's a great fit. That's my impression on the site. So I think that there's a possibility of a really solid, good infill project here. And I know it's a good builder, I know it's a good developer. And so I know that the product that will come out of here is, can be good, but I'd sure like to see a very thoughtful redesign and one that results in a true compliment to the area, to the neighbors, to the community, and gives the possibility of the elusive missing middle. We may be able to find that here with a redesign on that site. So I, while I think that it's a good thought, a proposal, I think it's too much, I just think it's 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack, and I think that will be evident in very short order if it were built. And I don't, I'm troubled by that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Anderson. Other comments from council members?
Well, I'll go ahead.
Remember, Jackson?
You know, this is just, the twin home, it seems like it would just, if that turn radius worked, this would be a no-brainer, right? And I am really grateful to the developer to having, you know, given us their designs that they looked at. You know, when I don't know what to do, I fall back on principles, and there are two principles that are going on here that I'm thinking about. One is, you know, what do our team members say? And the planning commission approved this, I think unanimously, didn't they, Mr. Teague? Yes. And staff is recommending this. I am in favor of, you know, upzoning where possible, and I'm looking for that missing middle. But it was a pretty powerful statement put out by the neighbors about the change to their neighborhood. And it is, it is a big change, it is a big mass, and I think, you know, that's, it was a powerful statement that I heard from the, from the public hearing process and, and hearing from the neighbors. So in the abstract, I think this is, you know, this is great, but that the mass of this, as Member Anderson said, is really burdensome, and I'm not, I'm not sold on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, remember Pierce?
Yeah. So in general, I do not support the rezoning request. Many of the points that Member Anderson made, you know, viewing that area and having a resident-first mindset, it does significantly alter the way those properties are utilized today. But the crux of the issue for me, I have to also acknowledge that a developer could build a single-family home, and it could be in an area that would meet the back setback, and it would still alter the look and feel of that community. But that would never come to council. Developer would apply for the permit and build the property. And so in situations like that, like my father used to always say, you put locks on doors to keep honest people honest. And at the end of the day, if that were the case, it would be my hope that the developer and the owner of that property would meet with the neighbors and figure out the best way to compromise with everyone involved. Because again, I'll restate, if it's a single-family home, it could plot right there with a 25-foot setback, and it would alter the view of the neighborhood, and it would never come to council. And so my preference, you know, I've said this a lot before, I'm not a developer, and I don't mean any disrespect when I say I don't want to solve this problem. I don't. I'm a, I'm a CIO. I'm an information technology guy. And so I let, you know, developers develop. And so it would be my hope that, my preference, which is similar to Member Anderson's, that the developer, if you're interested in developing on this site, would continue to work and find ways to put a property there that meets the needs of the developer and is in concert with the community. But I can't, I can't support it the way it is today.
Remember, Sutton?
Director Teague, you look like you have something to say.
I don't.
Okay.
He's hanging on every word, dude.
If we, if we were to deny this, what consequence does that have for future applications?
They would have to wait a year unless there was a significant change in the proposal.
So if it wasn't the two houses that are separated, they could come back with something different?
Yeah, I think a twin home.
Okay.
Attached would, would work.
Well, I don't have a lot to add. I kind of agree with my colleagues. I'm, I, you know, this building, you know, one thing about the pad that's on the screen, that's one way it could be done. It also could be done narrower and longer at any stretch in order to create a driveway that wouldn't need to access the house from the front. To get around to the back, you'd want to make it narrower. And we do have one of those on 4419 Grimes with a turning radius that's troublesome, that's up above the neighboring property, and that's a, you know, and I watched the planning commission, and basically their rationale was that they were, they would rather have the twin, you know, the what was proposed than a single-family home on the lot. So I'm sober about the possibility, but, but I kind of share a lot of the thoughts that my colleagues have articulated about how it doesn't fit in both in the front and the back, because it kind of sticks out on both ends. And I understand the logistics, and as Member Pierce eloquently said, it's not really our problem to solve. It's just for us to decide whether it fits or not, and I think it probably doesn't fit, so I would vote against.
I don't think that, Mayor, I really like the project somewhere else, so that's all I can say. Somewhere where it fits, where it doesn't feel like this is a variation of what Member Anderson said, but I usually use the expression, feels like you jammed 10 pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag, or tried to. And that's what this feels like. It's a 48-foot wide lot, 210 feet long, and you want to put two single-family homes on it. And I don't think it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood. It's as simple as that. So the, to me, for me, the variances don't work, because it doesn't meet the test for me of meeting the character, matching up with the character of the neighborhood. It makes me think a little bit about Interlock and Country Club, and what we did over there on a CUP basis, which is a different standard, but this is sort of, you know, first there was a four-unit building, now they want a two-unit building, there's another single-family home to the south, and then you get the duplexes, but it does make you wonder where, where do you draw the line? And for me, it just doesn't meet the character of the neighborhood, and it's, as I said, putting two single-family homes on a 48-foot wide lot, 200 feet long, doesn't make any sense. So I'd be opposed to it, too. So there's a, there's an opportunity here for the applicant to withdraw, isn't there, Director Teague? Can that be subject to the one-year rule?
They could, that's correct.
Although the one-year rule isn't, I mean, it's if they're going to bring back a similar proposal.
If they're going to bring back a variation of the team, we don't have to worry about the one-year rule.
Right, right. If they're going to bring back something different, for instance, an attached to dwelling unit, that would be, that wouldn't be what they propose, that'd be significantly different.
I'll leave that to their judgment as to what they want to do. But we're going to entertain a motion here to, I'm going to go back to the screen here. Here is a Resolution 2021-88 that provides for a denial of the preliminary rezoning request from R1. Is there anyone that cares to move the adoption of that resolution denying the request for preliminary rezoning?
Some moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in the second. On the matter, any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Tough one. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Next is one that I think will be easier. Medical building over on Berry Road, I think that'll be a little, at least a little easier. So Director Teague has this matter as well. Site plan review with the variances requested at 6500 Berry Road.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So the applicant would tear down the existing medical building, it's about 16,000 square feet, and build a new 24,000-square-foot medical office and surgery center. The planning commission had put three conditions on this, all of which the applicant, they've already met those. You recall, they demonstrated that during the public hearing, extending the sidewalk, moving the main entrance to the corner, and eliminating that driveway off of 65th. So with that, staff is recommending approval. The planning commission recommendation was for approval as well.
Questions from council members for Director Teague?
So in the comments, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
One of the questions was whether the trees would have enough room to grow. Is it, you know, our understanding that the trees would be okay, that they've proposed?
We believe they would, yes.
Okay.
In eliminating that driveway off of 65th, probably gives more opportunity on that side.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-89, which approves the site plan with variances per the planning commission recommendation on the site plan review with variances at 6500 Berry Road?
Some moved.
Remember, Jackson moves?
Second.
Remember, Anderson, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2021-89, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Ordinance 2021-11 is a matter that we've been talking about for several years, so it's really quite exciting to have this in front of us this evening, which is a proposed ordinance that would amend Chapter 20 concerning what's called green-to-go packaging. In other words, the takeout packaging that we see so often in our community and the restaurants. Our Energy Environment Commission has been working very hard on this, and I can't see over the podium, but we have Michelle Haran with us this evening? Virtually, okay.
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Hovland. My name is Michelle Haran, and I'm a member of the...
We need a little more volume on this side or the other side.
All right, I'll turn and speak.
Yeah, that sounds better.
Okay. I'm going to share...
Madam Vice Chair, thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to share my presentation, so hopefully, let's see. Can everybody see that?
We can.
Great. So I appreciate the opportunity to present the green-to-go packaging ordinance tonight. So in your packet, you have received the advisory communication report and a draft of the possible green-to-go packaging ordinance. Tonight, I would like to go over the what, who, and why's of such an ordinance. A packaging ordinance is one tool a city can use to help promote waste reduction, encourage recycling, and minimize contamination in organics and recycling waste streams. Who is affected by the ordinance? This table gives a quick overview. It will affect brick-and-mortar businesses and restaurants, as well as food trucks, but not manufacturer brokers, distributors, or warehouses, that do not have a retail outlet. The ordinance does not apply to food provided as a part of patient care in hospitals and nursing homes, but it does apply to any other food establishment within those facilities that is open to staff or the general public. If a business prepares its own food for onsite to-go sale, it must comply, but none of those to-go food items for sale have been stocked or purchased from a manufacturer, producer, or distributor. Caterers will need to comply, but the plastic film used to cover many of the food items they prepare is acceptable. Why should Edina pass a green-to-go packaging ordinance? There's been increased awareness about the vast accumulation and problems associated with plastic waste. Residents have expressed their concern, particularly with single-use plastics such as straws and utensils, and due to the pandemic, the increase in the use of restaurants and other businesses' takeout containers and single-use coffee cups and lids. A packaging ordinance would make it easier for residents to continue to support their local restaurants and businesses through the convenience and safety of takeout ordering while still being... through the convenience and safety of takeout ordering while still being able to reduce their waste. Customers could be confident that the containers they take home will not have to be thrown in the trash and then landfilled, but could be recycled or composted. Many businesses, oops, believe, and it has been proven, that promoting the environment is good business as well as good for the environment. A packaging ordinance would help support the green action businesses want to take or have already taken. An ordinance would also create a level playing field when purchasing to-go packaging. As more and more cities and businesses demand recyclable and compostable packaging, the variety and availability of green-to-go packaging will increase, while costs will continue to decrease. Making sure takeout containers and other to-go packaging can be recycled or compost will help reach the city's and county's goal to remove recyclable material from the waste stream. Landfills generate high amounts of greenhouse gas emissions. Removing recyclable material from the waste stream and sending less materials to landfills will also help support the city's greenhouse gas reduction goals. A green-to-go packaging ordinance also supports some of the initiatives that are found in the Edina's proposed climate action plan, as well as help get more businesses to the finish line if they are applying to be recognized as an Edina green business. Contamination of waste streams leads to the landfill. There's a lot of confusion about what plastics are recyclable, both by the consumer and by businesses. Although in the ordinance itself, there are no details on what specific packaging is considered acceptable or not, in the rules document, where there is greater ability to flex as new products and markets evolve, there will be a section specifically explaining what Edina currently considers to be acceptable green packaging to go. Currently, polystyrene in both rigid and foam, which is known as Styrofoam, and black plastics are not recyclable. Our residents want to recycle their plastics. When there are recyclable and compostable to-go packaging options available, we should not support those products that have no aftermarket in Minnesota and therefore are sent to the landfill. Businesses and consumers have the power to drive the market towards further sustainability. The ordinance would give businesses the direction to only supply packaging where the lid and container or cup is made of like materials. This will help greatly in reducing contamination. Businesses often end up providing lids and containers made with differing materials. Say the lid is recyclable, but the container is compostable. But because of consumers, they tend to throw away both lid and containers together into one bin. Despite the fact that both materials can be recycled, the combination of the two unlike materials creates contamination for both recycling and the compost. Many times, we try to do what's right, yet there are obstacles in the way that prevent us from achieving that goal. This is what happens every time you see a lone trash bin. The business I bought my coffee from may have given me a recyclable cup and lid, or my grocery store supplied my to-go salad in a compostable clam shell. But when I am done eating and the only waste receptacle I see is the one trash bin, guess where I put my green-to-go packaging? In the trash. And the leftover food that could have been used to create nutrient-rich, profitable soil, also in the landfill. Our businesses can do everything right, our residents could do everything right, but if we do not co-locate a trash bin and a recycling bin and/or compost bin, the efforts won't matter. It all ends up in the trash. Minneapolis, St. Louis Park, and St. Paul now have a packaging ordinance. Our Edina businesses and restaurants are not only familiar with these types of ordinances, but they may have already had to comply due to the fact that they own businesses in these other cities. Some businesses are also eager for us to pass an ordinance, such as Jared Olson at our 50th and France Starbucks. He would love to do even more than he's currently doing and wants to find more ways not only to provide sustainable packaging, but educate the consumers on recycling, organics, and the proper sorting of the two. A packaging ordinance would help support his efforts. Residents are also aware of other cities' packaging ordinances. They have expressed their desire to see Edina pass something similar to Minneapolis or St. Louis Park, especially after the increase in takeout, a behavior they see persisting. Tonight, we are asking council to engage the first reading of this ordinance and decide if they are ready to vote on it tonight or bring it back for a second and final reading. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you.
We're going to come back to the council now. I guess we lost, did we lose Vice Chair Heran?
No, I'm still here, sorry.
Yeah, she's still with us. She just went off video. All right, so does Grace, can't see who's out here. Is Grace Hancock with us?
Yeah, Mayor, she's the, there you go. She just turned her camera on.
Oh, yeah, she's
And Jeff Brown from Public Health is also available for questions.
Okay. This is Grace Hancock, our Sustainability Coordinator. And Vice Chair Heran is also available. Ms. Hancock, were there any comments you wish to make regarding this proposed ordinance?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also invite our Community Health Administrator to offer any comments since it would be the Health Division who would be implementing such an ordinance. From a sustainability perspective.
Can you adjust the volume at all? Hold on, Grace.
How's this, Mayor?
Not much.
Any better?
There you go.
Okay. Apologies. I'll offer my comments, and I also invite Community Health Administrator to offer his since the Health Division will be responsible for implementing such an ordinance if it's approved. From a sustainability perspective, the county has goals to reduce waste from residents in Hennepin County, 75% by 2030. This ordinance would help Edina make progress within the city and contribute to this goal. We also know from our greenhouse gas emission inventory that waste makes up around 2% of our greenhouse gas emissions. Increasing the amount of organics and decreasing the amount of landfill waste would mean that we would make progress on reducing our emissions. So sustainability is in support. It helps us meet our goals.
All right, thank you. Other comments from any staff or Community Health Director? Any comments?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Havlin. The health vision, as we do the regulation of the restaurants and food establishments in the city, we're able to incorporate this into our inspection process as an educational focus. So we're in support of the ordinance.
Thank you. Well, I think you've got some broad support here as well. There may be some questions from council members. Councilmember Jackson may have some questions or comments, having worked on the Energy and Environment Commission for several years and knowing that this was something that was ongoing in nature in terms of the work being done. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to send out a very big thank you to Commissioner Heran and former Commissioner Melissa Sealy, who worked on this for years now. A little history, I think, is useful. That Commissioner Sealy and Commissioner Heran worked on this when I first joined the Energy and Environment Commission, but we weren't able to bring it forward because we didn't have a composting program. But now that we have citywide organics recycling, this makes sense because without that program before, it would just have gone in the trash anyways for most people. So this fits very nicely with our overall plan. And thanks to those who worked on bringing us organics recycling. But I'm very much in favor of this. It's a slick thing. And I thank everybody who worked on this, especially you, Vice Chair Heran, and their former Commissioner Sealy.
Thank you, Member Jackson. Member Pierce?
Yep, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is awesome. Congratulations for bringing this forward. I'm going to make a comment that I've probably made this comment before. Policy is great, ordinance, having an ordinance is awesome. But it's not very meaningful if we can't enforce it. And so I think we have to be talking about what's the next level of ensuring that we're getting benefit or getting the benefit that we desperately need from ordinances like this. And I'll give the, just an easy example. There have been organizations for more than a decade that have had the slide that Commissioner Heran showed us, where you had blue for recycle, green for organic, and black or red for trash. Right? And so that's not a new concept. And so we do need to talk about, and not now, but we do need to talk about how we can ensure that we're getting value from policies and ordinances like this. Because I just think it's really important for our community and for the climate that we get to that discussion as well, now that we have the ordinance in front of us to be talking about how can we ensure we get value from it.
Thank you, Member Pierce. I've got a quick question here for Vice Chair Heran and maybe Ms. Hancock. I noticed in the notes accompanying the proposed form of ordinance, there was written information about the support by the Health Division by you, Mr. Brown. And then the Parks Department supported it as well, but they were suggesting extending the effective date beyond April 1, 2022, to allow food service providers to reduce their current inventory of containers and then gear up for this particular transformation. What are your respective thoughts on that? Do you endorse what the Parks Department said? Do you have some thoughts about setting the effective date? Vice Chair Heran, maybe we start with you?
Yeah, you know, I think I am fine extending it if it means that people can get to the point where we are setting them up for success versus rushing something that would then feel like we're, they're not quite ready. So I'm okay with that, and then that might just give everybody else a little bit more time. So I don't have a problem with that, just as long as then we don't kind of keep extending it, but.
Ms. Hancock?
Yeah, I would echo Vice Chair Heran's comments, and I think this speaks to Member Pierce's comments as well, that how can we craft an ordinance that is effective? And how can we ensure that these policies are not punitive, but support residents and businesses in making good decisions? And this is an example of that. So I believe the ordinance in front of you this evening has a July 1 effective date to kind of respond to that request for a timing expansion.
Good. Thanks for that. Mr. Brown, any thoughts on that?
Nothing additional. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Well, I was thinking that even if we got to May 1, that's at least six months from now. But suggesting July 1 is certainly appreciated as well. Thoughts from other council members on that effective date issue?
It's July, first, the only question I have at all is the merchants. Can they comply with this July 1, which is really what Member Pierce's question is as well? So do we have a realistic timeline here, and will they comply? And then, if not, or if that becomes difficult, then what's, how, where do we go from here in terms of enforcement?
If I can ask. Well, so these ordinance have been out for a while now. So I think a lot of restaurants are really aware of what's out there and are already complying. So, you know, if we had passed this when we originally brought it up, you know, having a little bit longer time would make more sense. But I think there's a lot of options out there that they're very much already aware of, and I've heard that this could be coming down the road. But on top of that, I think that, I just kind of lost my train of thought, that if a lot of the, well, in other cities, they wouldn't be punitive consequences if our residents or our businesses weren't able to comply fully. Like, we want to be a partner in this. So if there is some hardship, like there are people that have maybe, let's say they have two years' worth of Styrofoam cups. You know, we would want them to kind of move through those, but maybe we could help. We want to be partners. We don't want to be punitive. We want this to work for everyone. So if we have to, I mean, I can see us trying to work with individuals if they're really showing the hardship. I guess would be what I would.
Thank you. Vice Chair Heran. Grace?
Mayor, if I can, yeah, I want to commend Vice Chair Heran and former Commissioner Sealy because they held a series of focus groups in the spring of 2021 that included businesses and restaurant owners in Edina asking about this specific question, how much inventory do they keep on hand? And that information informed the original proposal of an April 1 effective date. Because what the commissioners heard was that a typical business has about three months' worth of inventory on hand. That information greatly informed the current proposal to Vice Chair Heran's point. We would want to partner. The point of bringing it into effect is that then we can start to have conversations with business owners and help those who are ready to go to go ahead and implement, help those who are not so ready to continue to move toward that path. And maybe Community Health Administrator Brown can speak a little bit to, you know, how this ordinance enforcement slots into the way that his team already partners with businesses around the city.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hancock. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, our approach with the majority of our licensed facilities that we do inspections with is an educational collaborative approach. You know, first and second, and a lot of times third. So that is really our approach, and this would fit well with that. So I agree with that partnership and collaborative approach.
Good. Yeah, we know there's been no industry more hard-hit than the restaurant industry, and it would be good to be as collaborative and as good a partner as we can be as we make this transition. That's good for everybody. Member Stotton had a question or a comment, too?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, just backing up to making sure I understand what the ordinance is doing. So I understand it's mandating this green-to-go packaging. And green-to-go packaging falls into two categories. It's either compostable or recyclable. And the recyclable packages, as I understand it, are including a variety of things, but when it gets to the last sentence of that definition, it talks about plastic food and beverage packaging that is acceptable as determined by Hennepin County. So tonight's plastic container that has a 5 on the back of it, is that recyclable?
Unfortunately, even though, so the top is, it's a clear plastic, it's number 5, which is definitely a recyclable product in Minnesota. But the black plastic is not recyclable, despite the fact that it is a resin that is recyclable. So black plastics aren't recyclable for two reasons. One is in the MERS or where the haulers bring and sort their plastics. Sorting is done by laser, and because of the black color, it just absorbs the light, it doesn't reflect it. And so it's not able to see what resin it is. So it ends up going in the trash. And then another reason why people don't, or there's not an aftermarket, is a lot of manufacturers don't want the color black because there's not much more they can make with black. So black right now does not have an aftermarket, and none of the haulers are taking it at the current time.
So this black plastic would not be an acceptable, it would not be a green-to-go packaging?
No, not currently.
So, and by referring to Hennepin County, that, am I correct in understanding that that will allow it to evolve as Hennepin County evolves? If Hennepin County is saying they're not accepting a certain recycling packaging, then that may change the terrain in the future?
Yeah, it could. And I think a lot is driven by the haulers and the MERS, they take it. If there is an aftermarket and they can make money and they say, yeah, we now can.
Oh, so it could go the other way, too. There could be a product that wasn't green-to-go but becomes green-to-go because there's a market found for it?
Yes.
Okay. And then later in the ordinance, in 20-639, there's these exemptions, and one of which says, "Any packaging which is not considered green-to-go packaging, but for which there's no available alternative as determined by the City of Edina following Hennepin County guidance." Can you give me some sense of what that means?
Yeah, so in the past, when like Minneapolis and St. Louis first passed Yeah, so in the past, when, like Minneapolis and St. Louis first passed this, hot cups, actually hot and cold cups were on the exemption list. Because at the time, like your Caribou's and Starbucks couldn't find, or even, let's say your McDonald's, somebody with a soda machine, they couldn't find a cup that would be suitable, where, you know, it wouldn't leak. And so now there are cups that are suitable replacements. And so both cities have taken that off the exemption list. Because there are options that are available.
And again, that's, we're, we're referring to Hennepin County with our kind of expertise so that we don't necessarily have to figure this out. We're going to use Hennepin County as a guide for this.
Mm-hmm.
Terrific. Okay, well, thanks. That's really helpful in helping me understand it. It looks like a great, great ordinance, a great step forward, and I'm, the July 1 date is fine with me. And I like the conversation we've been having about trying to partner. I assume that staff will be reaching out to businesses in the community once this is adopted, so that we can start to help them come into compliance with it. And then, my next meal won't include one of these. Thank you.
Or are you suggesting, Vice Chair Haran, that he take it home and clean it up and use it for storing leftovers in the fridge, or?
That's exactly what I'm doing with it. That's why mine is coming home with me.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. It's been suggested that we approve this on a first reading basis. Is there any reason not to waive second reading? Or is there, is there a process issue involved? Or, I don't hear anybody making any amendments. We only talked about the effective date as of July 1 being a modification of what's maybe suggested.
Not really, although there are times when there's, you adopt something on first reading, it gets a little, it gets a little news coverage, and we get some questions about it that we're able to answer before, or corrections that we can make on second reading. So that's one thing to think about.
Should we follow staff recommendation? Is there someone who would care to move approving ordinance 2021-11, amending Chapter 20 of the Edina City Code regarding green-to-go packaging, and grant first reading on that proposed ordinance change?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Member Stotin, second by Member Jackson. Approving the motion as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And then we have one matter remaining in this portion.
Thanks to everybody, you guys were great on this.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks, Michelle, for your tireless work over years and years on this.
Well, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being with us tonight, and Ms. Hancock as well, and Mr. Brown as well. So we've got one other matter in this portion of the agenda, and that is, we're going to talk a little bit more about the layout for the Morningside Flood Infrastructure Project, and Director Milner would like us to entertain approving the revised, what he calls the revised 30% design layout for the Morningside Flood Infrastructure Project, and I'm going to turn it now over to Director Milner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. If you recall, we were here, Ross and Jessica, and our park staff, Perry Vedder and Tom Swenson, who are here this evening again. We're here on September 21, and we had them out in the hallway there, getting feedback from a group of neighbors that came in that evening as we submitted a 30% design, and wanted to get feedback from the council and make sure we were moving forward in the right direction. So that evening, we collected more feedback from those residents that happened to be here, and we collected more feedback from you, the city council. So we have a, an tweak to the design, or a revised 30% design. So when you look at this, this was the layout of the park, Weber Park, and nothing changed, like in that northeast corner. It was really within that red box. So this is that tweaked design, or revised design, based on those feedbacks. So I'll zoom in here and discuss kind of those, those updates to this plan. So we heard a lot of, let me get my pointer here. So we heard a lot of comments about the existing rink, ice rink, which is here in the open skate area, that initial design had an option of moving that rink closer to the roadway and changing the open skate area, putting in a gazebo or shelter, picnic shelters, building natural play areas. And we heard, people said, just, just leave it alone, and let's come back at a different time and scope out park improvements. So that's what we did. We left the ice rink and open skate unchanged for future consideration by the park staff when it's time to do that. We created a flat space. We heard about concerns about having the swale run through, so the swale still runs through this corridor. And at this point, it'll be an open pipe system underneath the fields. You can see the dash line, which would pipe that stormwater in small events, and real large events, which makes most of the park area unusable for a certain amount of time. That'll happen here, too, as the water overtops that pipe and drains to that area. So not a big change what's going, but that allows us to create a flat, open space, which we heard the Morningside Athletic Group really likes to have kind of ad hoc games in this field. So creates that big open space for those type of things. And we also, working with the parks group, they were willing to remove that permanent outfield fence. So now that fence is gone, and that open play area between the fields can be accommodated. So we've communicated this plan on the Better Together website. We also communicated with the Morningside Neighborhood Group and that Morningside Athletic Group. This change does affect the budgets. We have less work to do in the open skate and ice skate rink area. We're not going to do any soil amendments or irrigation improvements, but by piping it, there is about a $500,000 estimated cost increase to the project. We're going to continue to try to value engineer the big project and try to make that fit in there, but we just want to make you aware that these changes do have a cost impact. So in the budget, you can see Ross put together the CIP and updated that sheet in there, and also Jessica Wilson updated the engagement report, and that's in your packet this evening. So I really wanted to emphasize the schedule. We really have to stay on schedule here. We're looking for an approval tonight of this revised 30% design, because this project's really tied to our street reconstruction program, and we have one, the Southern Neighborhood Morningside D and E, scheduled for next year. And with all the regulatory permits that's required, we got to keep this project moving, and we don't want to lose that opportunity with the street reconstruction program. So just wanted to emphasize that schedule here this evening again. And I would look for, we would recommend council approves this revised 30% design. I could stand for any questions. And like I said, we have park staff here, too, if there's any park programming questions.
All right, good. You may have a few here. Questions for Director Milner? Member Jackson?
Thank you. So my first question is about the connection of the swale and the pipe. One of the neighbors did ask me, how does that water flow then?
Yep, it's a flared-in section with a protection grate to keep kids out of it, or larger animals, and also catch debris that gets stuck in the pipe. So it's a, we're still designing it, kind of the swale going into an structure type to get into that pipe.
Okay, thank you. And then to, just to make it clear on the record, the read, the original way the softball fields were designed, changing that to remove the swale and the fence is going to cost us $500,000. So the, the cost of keeping that space open and, and flat is, is $500,000. Is that a correct reading of your comments?
That's our initial estimate with this concept. You know, we just did this a week or two ago, and we're still running all those numbers. There is some savings by leaving the existing rink and that, but initially, we see that $500,000 number here as our initial estimate.
Yeah, I think it's really important that, that when we, we make changes and things like that, that we acknowledge that it's, it's not free. The final question I have is, I had a number of comments given to me about various things in the park, and that's in the future. That's not this discussion for this project at all at this point, and that will be on Mr. Vedder's calendar, as to when he wants to look at Weber Park and redesign it.
Correct. You know, I think we got into some more park programming where we maybe shouldn't have, and we heard from the residents, and let's focus on the flood. What's needed to do the flood project? That's goal number one. So that's what you see here, is what we need to make that happen.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Others? Member Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I had prepared lots of comments on this. How, I think what I will say is, I really am proud of the work here. And I know this is, it's, it's a hard thing to do when you're making a choice to alter a natural space, you know, quite significantly. But I do, I think it's worth, I think we should applaud city staff and the process that they use to engage with the community. I, I do like the fact that we've heard feedback, and a lot of the feedback we've heard has been incorporated into the, the redesign. And I just, I just think that's good. It's a hard choice, but I think it's the right thing to do, given the impact to homes in that area, for sure. And so the only thing I would ask, and I know you would continue to do this, is to continue to take that feedback, and as we move forward and we tweak the design where we need to, I would just encourage us to continue to do that. And I loved Member Jackson's point about making sure we share what the cost is of some of the decisions that we're making, because we are, we are choosing to potentially spend more to honor the wishes of the community, as well as still address the, the main challenge. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Member Anderson?
I would just really echo the comments of my colleagues, but especially Member Pierce's, because your team was able to make changes on the run, and I appreciate the sensitivity to the community, listening carefully and saying, okay, let's do what we can here. At the same time, we're also creating a substantial reduction in stormwater runoff and reducing the level of flooding, or the potential of flooding. I think that was the key to the whole project. We improved the parks overall, but I, I really appreciate you listening and taking action. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it, but I think the real key is working with our Parks Department. I mean, these are their facilities and how they operate them and maintain them, and having that partnership here is really the key to how we got to this concept, so.
Yeah, thank you. Member Stotin?
I don't have much to add, other than we're at 30%. I would just encourage you to continue to work with folks who are the stakeholders over the next 70%, and great work, thanks.
Yeah. I join my colleagues in expressing it a different way. We started several years ago worrying about climate change and stormwater management issues, and this is really the first big project out of the chute, and it was really, to, to the point made by my colleagues extraordinarily well-done, I think, and a lot of neighborhood engagement. We, we had a little hiccup towards the end between figuring out the pathway for the engineering project versus the ball fields and everything else, how to use them, and the park itself. And, but you, you worked your way all the way through that, too. I sent out emails and haven't heard anything back from anybody that they object to the, to the park plan the way it is. So I really commend all of you for really getting in there and, and working with the neighbors. But really quite an outstanding outcome, when you think about a city taking on sustainability problems and dealing with stormwater in an ever-wetter world that we're operating in, and then having this be your first big project and being so successful at it. It's really, it's, it's pretty remarkable, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And so is there a motion to approve the revised 30% design layout for the Morningside Flood Infrastructure Project?
So moved.
So, a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to approve the revised 30% design layout for the Morningside Flood Infrastructure Project. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And that's it for the heart of the meeting this evening. We've got commission correspondence. I don't think we've had anything come in, have we? Manager Neil, or?
We have not.
All right. Clerk Allison, nothing's come across your?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Screen that we need to worry about? All right, aviation noise update? I haven't heard anything from former Member Brindle, have you?
I'm actually having coffee with her tomorrow to talk about this, so I'll have something next time.
All right, very good. Mayor and council comments. Member Pierce, you want to lead us off, please?
Yep, thank you. Just briefly, I just wanted to thank everybody for being so understanding, because my schedule has been a little up in the air with a, a new job change. And I have, you know, received a few email, few emails saying, hey, what's going on? What, what happened to you? And so I take all of that with, with love, that, and so I definitely appreciate everyone stepping in and, and just kind of helping me keep up the speed. So hopefully that's starting to settle down a little bit, and as Member Anderson said the last time, are you off injured reserve yet? So I'm, I'm pretty close, pretty close. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Stotin?
Nothing for me.
Member Anderson?
Yes, thank you. Couple things, and they are also really kind of laudatory comments on staff experiences in the last couple of days. First, a resident actually left a voicemail for me yesterday, and they were concerned about water pressure in a condominium development. I believe it was at 7,200 Kho. And they had maybe left a call, maybe left an email. And, and basically, what I did in returning the call was just to say, I'm going to transfer your call to our Public Works Director, Brian Olson, and let's see what they can do with it. By 10 o'clock, that was about 3:45 yesterday morning, by 10 o'clock this morning, I had an email from Director Olson, actually forwarded from the utility supervisor, Nathan Catterlink, who had already been out, evaluated the system, tested the pressure, reported to the homeowner, and I'm not sure if he has an HOA connection, but one way or the other. So at that point, then, the, you know, the condominium association simply called a plumber to get over and repair the work that was done. But if you took a look at that as customer service in today's world, you would say that's off the charts. And so that's a, a big thank you to both those guys for following up in the way that they did. It was great work. And I had another call from the resident this morning, again, saying, thank you so much. And he said, you know, all I did was transfer a phone call, and these guys really jumped right in and took care of it. And, you know, it wasn't an emergency, but it could have been, and that's, it was great. Also, just to mention that a little bit earlier this evening, we approved the sale of refunding bonds, and that reduces the city's debt by almost $550,000. Our, our former finance director, Don Oram, was finding these things here and there, and our new finance director, Alicia McAndrews, was on it, found that, and saved our taxpayers $550,000. That's a, that's a nice piece of work, so well done, Director McAndrews. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. One is, on Sunday, our Human Rights and Relations Commission had yet another event. They're just event crazy. I am just really impressed. This was a conversation on race and policing, and it included our new chief of police, Todd Milburn. And I just want to thank everybody who participated in that. I found it really interesting, and I learned a lot, and I know that a lot of work goes into those, so thank you and job well done. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, I am participating in a group called the Cities Climate Caucus, and we're talking about ways in which cities can continue to address climate change, and boy, you know, just looking at what we have to do on flood mitigation alone, just takes my breath away, and the amount of work that we have ahead of us. And so I'm, I'm working with them, and we'll be bringing some things forward, too, but I wanted to let you know that that's in the works. And it's a, it's an interesting group. It includes the mayor of Rochester, Kim Norton, who is someone I worked with at the legislature and really admire quite a bit, and Larry Kraft from St. Louis Park is our chair. So I just want to let you know I'm working on that, and I'll be bringing some things forward, so.
Thank you. I'm glad you're, pleased you're working on that. Quick report for me. After our last meeting, I went and met with a couple of the neighbors down in the Morningside Neighborhood, walked the parks, and that was, you know, followed by, I think, work by our Parks Department on the meeting with the neighbors down there. So again, a, a, a real vote of gratitude and appreciation, and thanks to you for working with the neighbors down there. On the 9th, we had highway cleanup over here in front of City Hall. That's kind of my territory with my wife, right below City Hall, and had four bags full in a bucket we found, lined in the road, filled that up, too, and set it up by the highway. And then had a France Avenue discussion, the rebranding of France Avenue on the 11th. On the 12th of October, I spoke to the Edina Realty Realtors, like I did in the past for On the 12th of October, I spoke to the Edina Realty Realtors, like I did in the past for Cobell Banker Realtors, and gave them a little land use update. And then suggested to the superintendent of schools that she ought to go over and meet with the Realtors in both major organizations in our community as well. And I think it would be important to do. And then our MLC Legislative Agenda Subcommittee's starting to meet. So some of the things we talked about tonight, climate related, are upstairs. We should be thinking about that. And then on the 15th, Friday morning, was the School Business Roundtable. A couple hours over, the Edina Country Club, the school district, asked the business community to come in and partner with the chamber to bring in businesses to talk about the possibility of setting up internship-type programs with students that were seniors in areas of interest to help them, you know, figure out a potential direction for themselves. And then the next day, or last Saturday, was Walk with the Mayor, had a small group of folks that showed up there and had nice conversations. And then I wanted to, I hadn't been over there yet, but this new nature center that St. Louis Park built in Westwood Hills, it's extraordinary. And I encourage people to go over and look at it. It's a net zero building, beautiful setting. As we sat in there in the meeting of some of the regional council of mayors, I felt like I was in Ely looking out the window. It's really quite a beautiful place and it made me think about some of the people in our community that have lobbied for us to have a nature center over in, around Lake Cornelia, near where the art center is. So those are kind of some of the things that have gone on in my world the last couple of weeks. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll just add that I attached to my report in the packet tonight was the Budget Work Plan Update and the Race and Equity Work Plan Updates. Those are two accountability documents that just keep the council informed about our progress on the goals that you set for us. That's all I've got.
Okay. Got prompt, anything from anyone? Anything further? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Member Stotin, second from Member Jackson, that we adjourn our meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Carried. Stand adjourned.